Okay.
We had it the way.
It will now be recorded.
Okay, now you're recorded, sorry. Took a long time.
No?
Yeah, we're good.
All right, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for coming. It is now 7:00 PM on Tuesday, July 8th, 2025, and I call this regular meeting of council ordered here in the social scene in Victoria Beach. I would like to acknowledge that we are meeting here on Treaty One territory, the traditional homeland of the Anishinaabe, Cree, and the Seminou Nation, Dakota, Assiniboine, and Denai people, and the homeland of the Red River Métis. We acknowledge the harms and mistakes of the past and we strive to move forward in partnership with First Nation and Métis communities in the spirit of reconciliation and collaboration. Introductions around the table. I will start on my far right.
Hello, I'm Councilor Graham Randall. Erwin Calhoun.
Kenny McMorris.
Lon Turner, CAO.
Steve Axley.
Ian Chadson.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right, we will move on to adoption of the agenda. Be it resolved, the agenda be adopted as presented. May I have a mover? Steve, thank you, second. Graham? Any additions, gentlemen? Steve?
I would like to add the removal of new illegal stairs along the banks.
All right, anything else, gentlemen? All right, carry nothing further. All those in favor? Carrie, thank you. All right, we will move on to minutes. Be it resolved, the minutes of the June 17th, 2025, where a new meeting with council be adopted as presented. May I have a mover? Erwin, thank you, second. Steve, thank you. Gentlemen, did you have a chance to read the minutes? No concerns?
Spots.
Spots, all right. All those in favor? Carrie, thank you. All right, we are moving on to delegations. I don't see Mr. Taylor here. Is he coming in or lying, do you think?
I let him know that he was confirmed for today. He didn't ask for a link. I assumed he was coming in person. That's my bad, I should have.
All right.
He didn't ask for it, so.
Okay. Just a reminder to our delegations that you have 10 minutes, please. And we ask your comments of behavior of being respectful of council and others present at all times. So if Sean is not here, Mr. Juza, you are up, please, sir.
No, thank you.
Is there any more to say? I don't have it on this phone.
My recorder's working?
Yes, sir.
Good. Okay, basically, the reason I'm here is a statement, Penny, that you made at the last council meeting, at the beginning of it, which said that we should respect the employees of our municipality and that also we should not, as it were, in, I think in your words, basically attack members of council. Okay? In other words, whatever. So actually, the first part of your statement, I think, is perfectly correct. It actually, oh, actually, you said you stopped the meeting. Okay, now, the first part of your statement regarding our employees, I think, is really worthwhile. They have been working incredibly hard trying to repair the damage that Valley Fiber has caused the infrastructure of this community and is still continuing to cause, by the way. Right? So employees that work really hard diligently, they deserve our respect. I think they also deserve a bonus from Valley Fiber. They have the money, $330 million for their project. They can afford to give them some. Now, the thing about your statement about abuse of council members, your words, abuse of council members. Okay, this is a really interesting term. So I would like to inquire as to what abuse of a council member is hypothetically. In other words, at the previous meeting, I had mentioned something that you had said. Lon, Ian Chadson interrupted and claimed that I was picking on me. So I'd like to know if your statement at the beginning of the meeting about abuse of councils is related to that statement by Ian Chadson?
Chadson? And no, it's not.
Okay, fair enough. Now, so what is actually abuse of a council member? At council, you consider a lot of issues, a lot of measures, a lot of programs, a lot of proposals. And in doing so, it may be the case that a member of council makes a false statement about an issue before council. Making a false statement, of course, there are several kinds of false statements. Roughly four, but only two are relevant. The first is a false statement made from ignorance. The second is a false statement made with the intent to deceive. In other words, we call that a lie. So is it abuse of a council member to point out as a delegation at a council meeting that a council member has made a false statement on an issue at some time before the council? You can answer the yes. That's the first thing. Secondly, is it abuse of council to point out that members of council have violated the municipal act by holding a secret meeting or a committee of council having a series of meetings in violation of Section 152 of the municipal act? Is that abusing a member of council? Okay, that's the second one. Third, if there is evidence of collusion between a member of council and segments of the community in order to bring about a project, okay, in other words, through various measures, is this, in pointing this out, is this an abuse of a council member? So those are basically the three things I would like you to respond to. In other words, what is abuse of a council member? What is picking on a council member? And actually, to be accused of picking on you, in a certain sense, Ian actually is picking on me. He's actually claiming that I am somehow a bully. Bullies pick on people. Okay? So in other words, this is a kind of picking on a member of the community. Right? So what is abuse of a council member?
Well, those are good questions. I think abuse of a council member could entail information that you feel is accurate that we disagree with. I think it could be putting false information and false facts on social media. I think it could be yelling at council members or it could be yelling at members of the public. It could be any number of things that constitute abuse.
Okay, so it's a matter of judgment, then?
Yes, it is a matter of judgment. And under the municipal act, the chair of council, or head of council, has the authority, as we see. Everyone has a right to be present at a meeting of a council or council committee unless the person chairing the meeting expels a person for improper conduct. So essentially, the chair can determine what is improper conduct.
Okay, I guess very wide subject is evaluation.
Correct, but I would argue that some of your subjections are wide as well.
Oh, what?
Wide, as well.
In what sense, wide?
Well, you said my subjections were very wide and varied. So are yours.
I have a section by law, 1602, or section 13.4.
All right, so, thank you, Lon. And section, by law, 1602, which are procedural bylaw, states in section 13.4 that the chair may require any person other than a member of council who is in the opinion of the chair conducting himself or herself in a disorderly or improper manner to lead the public hearing or council meeting. If that person fails to do so, it may cause that person to be removed. So for good or bad, I do have authority to determine what is inappropriate behavior.
No, I understand it, that's fine. But I wanted to narrow at least the definition of what is abuse of a council member. So that's what I'm due for.
It takes very many forms.
Okay, so, all right, turn it on. That's it?
Okay, thank you, George. All right, anything from Mr. Taylor?
I sent him an email.
I did send him an email, so if he pops in, he pops in. But it doesn't look like it.
All right, we'll carry on then. If he does join us, we'll bring him in, okay? All right, so we'll move on to accounts and finances. Be it resolved, following Mr. accounts be approved for payment. Checks 13392 to 13471 in the amount of $408,399.80. Credit card charges in the amount of $10,812.88. And total expenditures in the amount of $419,202.68. May I have a mover? Ian, thank you, second. Erwin? Thank you. Ian, any comments on the accounts?
Just a few. It is a large amount, but it's also the season. So there's some big expenditures. For example, $16,020 yards of day base for the roads. That was about $54,000. Dust control, that's another $70,000. There was a computer box for different people. That was about $56,000.
Thousand or hundred? Thousand or hundred?
Which the...
Computers?
Computers, $56,000.
$5600.
$5600.
You're scaring me. I'm like, geez.
Yeah, I got to the wrong spot, sorry. I just wanted to take that fucking hell of a computer. Golf course, building repairs. So there was a number of things that needed to be repaired. Pretty hadn't been repaired in like 30 years. So Graham, thank you very much. That's about $13,000. Enhanced police calling. That's $8200. We're aware of that. That's just the 911 calls.
Oh, yeah.
That sounds like more than 911.
What page do you, or what is it?
It says $8250, $8,250. City of Brandon.
Oh, that's 911.
That's 911.
Yeah.
That's from a year ago?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Hopefully it's not.
There's such an annual fee for the dispatcher. I guess not the number of people living in the community.
Great. What else do we have? Transfer station in Alexander is $11,000. And then Fire Smart is about $24,000. So that was the, just the, the tree guy was here for about two weeks, so he did a great job. But as I say, most of these expenses are for just sort of getting the season set up.
Any other comments, gentlemen?
Just one question, Lon. I noticed that we made four separate payments on taxes to the receiver. Gentlemen, do you not normally submit that once a month?
I know, every couple of weeks, we have to do it. So there's three pay periods in this run.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anything further, gentlemen? All those in favor? Carrie, thank you. Ian? We will move on to, no, old business. We'll move on to seven, new business, 7A. Be it resolved to approve the purchase of a John Deere 35P mini excavator with hydraulic thumb in the amount of $82,106.40 plus applicable taxes. For the be it resolved to approve the purchase via a 48-month financing plan payable monthly in the amount of $1,933.29, which includes taxes. May I have a mover? Thank you, Steve, second. Ian, thank you. All right, some of you may know, council, that we've had this excavator for about a month or so and has proved almost invaluable to the team. This is a great deal. It's 0% financing for the 48 months. And it comes with three, two extra buckets and a thumb attachment. So it's able to get into tighter spaces. It'll be able to help us with some of our trails maintenance and ditchings and culverts, et cetera. I think it's a good investment. Go ahead, Graham. Oh, sorry, Ian.
I just wanted to, I had something to remind Dean that he said that this became out of the budget.
Well, the monthly budget, it will.
Exactly. I just need, you just need to remind him of that. And it's worth noting that this is, this has been accomplished for just a little bit less than $2,000 a month to have the use of this. Naturally, we're already getting into what has attached these vehicles, so that's down the road. We thought we asked, because we're interested in the use of it. Congratulations, so, Erwin.
All right, any further comments, gentlemen?
Just one.
Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, I spoke to Dean previously about the fact that, you know, we're always asked, can we vary our lines? Can we vary our lines? Can we vary our lines? So now that we have a smaller unit, it could possibly, like, it could be possible that we could start to slowly do it over time, that we put out a section for one of our workers to work on, to be able to dig the trench and then vary the line after that. But it, basically, is something that we can now do. Like, we have the ability with a smaller excavator. It would be a little bit additional money. I'm not saying that we do it this year. I'm not even saying that we start necessarily next year. But now we actually do have the equipment to start to slowly move through, which could be really good for us, long run, because it means less broken lines. But it's something that we constantly get asked to start to do.
By who?
Providence.
You haven't been asked for several years.
For several years, but every time we do meet with them about the water treatment plant, they always bring it up.
Yeah, and it's a good point, Steve. If we're ever called upon to prove to office of treaty water that we are making some progress, even if it even only be token progress, at least we have the means to do that.
I think that would also involve an engineering study and, you know.
Oh, yeah, all kinds of work.
Look at the, look at the, the work that probably five percent doing with their directional drilling equipment. Oh, boy. But yeah, it's something to think about. So, thank you. All right, any further discussion on this?
Nope.
All those in favor? Carrie, thank you. All right, moving on to our zoning bylaw. Be it resolved, zoning bylaw number 1651, be given third reading and passed. This will be a recorded vote, gentlemen, because it's a third reading. May I have a mover, please? Ian, thank you, second. Steve, thank you. If I may, I am very pleased to be able to put this important bylaw on the table for third and final reading. We received only six objections following the second reading of the bylaw, and 25 objections are required for this bylaw approved municipal board. This has been eight years in the making. It has included many consultations with various groups and residents to ensure that it is as good as it can be. I appreciate all the feedback from residents and groups, council, our building inspector, our CAO, and the numerous planners who were involved in the evolution of this. Thank you to Andre Friesen and Landmark Planning for their expertise and patience. So council, any comments before we have the vote? Ian?
No, I think we've really crossed all the Ts and filled out all the Is and all the rocks. And I think, as you said, everybody's had a good say on this. We've certainly listened. We've had a very good supplier that's put this together for us, and I think they've done a great job. I have a opinion.
It's not perfect. Nothing ever is perfect. But it, it comes pretty darn close. And I'd like to compliment Andre and his staff for talking to people and continuing to resolve questions and issues as recently as last week. Thank you, Andre.
All right, thank you. All right, gentlemen, recorded vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You know, this, oh, my gosh. Thank you.
I brought champagne.
I said I'd bring champagne, I'm saving it. Um, thank you.
That's the reason I came.
Should we discover, excellent, now is when we get it done for 20 years from now?
Yeah, let's start.
Anyways, thank you, genuinely. Thank you, everybody, for your participation and your feedback. All right, moving on to 7C. Whereas CIBC requires an updated borrowing resolution to meet their security requirements, therefore be it resolved to authorize for the year 2025 the ongoing operating line of credit of $500,000 and four corporate Visa cards with a total credit limit of $20,000 each. May I have a mover? Ian, thank you, second. Steve? This is a housekeeping, more than anything, isn't it, Lon?
Yeah, that's correct.
Any discussion, gentlemen?
Nope. Do we know the rate?
Uh, no, sorry.
It's just prime plus something.
Yeah, I can get that for you if you want. We've never used it, so I've never really.
The question was, do we know the rate? And we don't. And we have never used it, was the answer. But we will find out the rate. Why do we need to have it, then, if we've never used it? Is it just for emergencies or just, it's a cushion?
Is it not required by problems?
Nope.
Nope. Imagine you had a roof cave in or something terrible. You need money to kind of solve the problem. That's what it is.
All right. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, Carrie, thank you. All right, moving on to correspondence information. Oops, what did I do? Oh, sorry, Steve, pardon me. I do that every time we add something. Go ahead, sir.
Don't you need to start the process, Ross?
You add it on to the agenda. Stairs on, stairs on the beach. Go ahead, sir.
So there's new stairs, new private stairs that have shown up on the shoreline by private owners. Lon's aware of it. And we're in the middle of putting the process together of, I guess, assuming that we know who they belong to, even though, of course, the house is right in front of where the stairs are, as it always is. Given that they're on public land and nobody's claiming ownership of them, can we just go over and just remove them now, please? Because this is a direct violation of the hard, fast, brutal message from council that said that we will no longer allow any structures on the beach, no matter what, until it's gone through the shoreline committee. Yes, we have new ones. So can we get the backhoe tomorrow? And go remove them?
No, we're not setting a backhoe onto the beach to remove stairs in the middle of the summer.
I would like a vote. I would like to have a resolution. I would like to have a vote because council said very specifically that we would not allow any, any structure on the shoreline, no matter what. That's, I believe that there was the word of warning used multiple times. And you have been warned multiple times since we passed that, that moratorium, which we did not need to do because they are illegal. And this is quite literally the last thing in the face of council.
What's the address?
Lon would know the addresses of the ones that have been reported.
On Sunset.
Okay, yeah, it's on Sunset.
Mary Warren.
Yes, sorry, Erwin.
I'd like to suggest that this issue be tabled. The shoreline advisory committee met yesterday. We are that close to finalizing the draft, which will be likely presented at the next meeting. And one of the questions that the shoreline advisory committee has had to deal with is what to do with this situation. And I would suggest it would be appropriate for council to wait until they get a chance to review the recommendations and then make the difficult decisions. Thank you.
Do you mind if I just use an acronym? But unfortunately, the T doesn't really work, but Taco? So, I mean, we're backing down again. We have the right to go and remove these structures. No discussion. There's no, it's not, none of this is necessary. We've been told by municipal lawyers, you have the full, full right to go and rip out these, these legal structures. So then we have the shoreline committee. So I guess that we can try to find some way to allow them to do something legal. And so then we pass the, this memorandum, or sorry, moratoriums. And under those circumstances, is the Victoria Beach Council going to permit or allow, under any circumstances, more future development along the shoreline? They will be illegal, they will be removed. And here we are.
And we're backing down. To be, to be clear, that was not what the moratorium said. It said we would not allow any new construction.
This is new.
Until such time, the shoreline advisory committee had the program on the issue.
These are new.
I know, but that's your, that's your opinion that you should get a backhoe and rip it out. You're the only one that says that. Nobody else on council has said that. You're the only one that thinks that way.
Okay, so Lon, what's the, what's the strategy here? Because the nice part is to deliver them in Schedule As, which are not necessary.
I can't remember what section is, 242 in the municipal act. If you're gonna rip out somebody's property, just in the past, this is what you've done. There's something called a Schedule A. So anybody that contravenes a bylaw, they get a Schedule A. It's kind of an order to remedy the contravention, which one has been sent out, the other one's gonna be sent out tomorrow or Thursday, and others have been sent out in the past. You recently had one in the fall with somebody appealing it. That's Schedule C, which everybody has a right to do. Anybody that's given a fine has the right to appeal as well before council. I would be very nervous to just, upon my own order, issue a backhoe to go and rip somebody's, even though maybe not on their property. But I will do whatever council wants me to do, but I am not gonna take that on my own. The next step, though, they can appeal. If they don't appeal, then we issue a second order. Okay, we have a second inspection, you haven't remedied the order. You have another right to appeal this order. Then in that letter, there's a warning that says if you don't by a certain date, municipal is gonna take action to remedy the contravention, and all expenses will be charged to your rule number. That's Schedule B.
And the normal timeline that this takes.
Oh, yeah. Uh, usually, uh, three weeks per order, I guess, you give them?
Okay.
Uh, they have to appeal within 10 business days of getting any Schedule A or Schedule B. And that appeal goes to me and then obviously to council.
Okay, one more, one more question. So what happens when we don't get a response, because they say that's not ours and we don't know whose it is, as this happens every single time? Oh, hey, we didn't know. We've, just magically, all of the force directly in front of our property, directly along our property lines has been cleared out. I don't know who did it. What's the next part after that?
I will take orders from council, whatever you wanna do with this. It's a sensitive issue, and I'm gonna wait for a council decision on this.
Okay, I would just like one last comparison, and then I'll give the mic over to everybody else. What happens if somebody puts a, let's just say, oh, set of stairs in the middle of the fields over by the, over at the store? What will we do? They have no idea whose they are, nobody's gonna take responsibility for them. What will we do?
Should someone decide to put stairs somehow or another in the middle of the village green, I think it would be safe to say they're being removed, because they are in inappropriate location? For starters?
So that's the exact same scenario, just different locations, still on our property, still on public property, illegal structure. But in that case, we would remove them. But because it's in front of somebody's cabin, I have no idea what their income is, but I'm assuming that it would be.
That's irrelevant.
Really?
Yes, it's irrelevant what someone's income is. It's irrelevant what someone's income is, frankly. It's not of our business.
I, I think it makes a lot of sense to, or it makes common sense to follow what Irwin said. If you're talking all of these different levels of sending out letters, and they're three weeks in between, you know, what do you got, almost two months? I mean, Irwin said next council meeting, we're gonna have a solution. I think it makes more sense to go that route, rather than, um, it just, to me, it makes common sense just to wait and find out what the, what's being proposed, and then we have a, a better way to proceed.
All right, any other comments?
I agree with what Ian has said.
I think the stance of council is pretty obvious after that conversation.
If you wanna keep commenting, I will ask you to be quiet or leave. Thank you. We do have a plan, and we're asked, we've asked, we agreed to ask the shoreline advisory committee to look into this, Steve. It's been a little long in coming, but Irwin assures us that, that there will be something coming for our, for our review at the next council meeting. I think we have to stand by that. It is truly unfortunate that some people have decided to ignore the moratorium and also put stairs down on private, private stairs on perhaps public property. Do we know for sure they're on public property, all of them? No, we don't. Excuse me.
Okay, I am gonna leave.
Thank you.
I spent an hour and a half at that meeting.
Thank you, you can go now. Thank you, you can leave. You can leave, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, you can leave. Can you call the police, please? Can you call the police, please? Good for you. Can you call the police, please? This is inappropriate. Can you, oh, can, all right, out. Out. Totally inappropriate. All right, thank you very much. So, um, back to what I was trying to say before, I was so very rudely interrupted. We did agree to let the shoreline advisory committee provide us some recommendations. I think we owe them that. I know that's not what you wanted to hear, Steve, but I don't think it's in, in our best interest to just go ripping stairs down and causing possibly more damage to the bank at this point. If, as you say, they decide they're not their stairs, then we can get with them, because they obviously don't belong to anyone. But you want us to do that in the middle of the summer?
Yes.
When there's people on the beaches?
Yes.
Oh, okay, that'd be a hit.
So, um, I'm not, it's not clear in my mind, how many new stairs are there, do we know?
About 180?
No, I know that, that's how many, that's how many Steve wants to rip out, is 130 or 40 sets of stairs. But that doesn't make any sense to me. But I'm asking, as far as new stairs, since we put that moratorium in place back in December, how many new stairs have been set up?
We think two.
Okay, do we know who they are?
Yes.
Okay, so why don't we send them a letter and ask them why they did that for that purpose? That would start, and then when we get your, um, your proposal, we can then at least have a response from them or decide what we're gonna do next. But I, at least, I'd like to know why they went ahead and did that.
Out of respect for the shoreline advisory committee, we've put in a lot of hours, we've done a lot of study. I would ask council to simply wait two weeks. You'll be getting the report in advance of next, when we give them another chance to review it. And then we can have a very, I'm sure, what will be a very vigorous debate about these issues. Remember, shoreline advisory committee simply provides some recommendations. Shoreline does not have the authority or the power to dictate the council.
I agree. But, yeah, council has a, but because they're, it would be costly too, that the committee, council has the responsibility to listen to them.
All right, thank you. Go ahead.
There's a question posed, so I'm answering it. Derek Knox, um, they put them down because they know for a fact council's gonna do absolutely nothing about it.
I just got the, the recent set of new stairs, they were, they're brand new, and I just got it this week. So I don't know if the shoreline committee would have been privy to that knowledge when they had their meeting on the weekend. So I, I think that's what they were yelling at when they left, that that wasn't brought up.
Shoreline advisory committee was not dealing with any specific issue. And we were looking at the bigger picture. At the end of the day, once council decides how to deal with these problems, I mean, it's council's job to decide what to do with specific issues.
Agreed. Aye.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, can we move on? All right, um, on to first one, information and announcements. I have a few actually. Uh, the school tax issue, the public meeting is this Thursday, or next Thursday, July 17th at 7:00 PM here at the Social Scene. Uh, our area, M L A, Lena Rossco and Finance critic, M L A, Roland Stone, will be in attendance. Premier Genu, Minister Sala, and Lord Selkirk School Division School Trustee Johnston have sent their regrets, so far, the others I have not heard from that were invited. Uh, this will be a meeting to present the facts of the situation and to discuss strategies to push the province for change in how education is funded in our province, and to address the fact that seasonal property owners do not owe in the Lord Selkirk School Division trustee elections, yet they now pay the full school tax portion on their tax bills. Uh, fire ban on July 3rd, on the advice of our fire chief, council lifted the fire ban in our community, only allowing for the use of approved backyard fire pits. There is still a ban in place for ATV use and always for fireworks. We ask all members of the community to be aware of the conditions around you and of your actions with anything that could give off a spark or that is combustible, flammable, and could cause fire. Fire smart your property, ensure you have a 72-hour go-bang rating, know where to gather your family, know your neighbors, and sign up for BB Connect. BB Connect is the best way to reach you in an emergency situation to provide you with facts, um, not the community Facebook fiction. Fire hall construction, be aware, if you haven't noticed, that there is fencing now around the new fire hall site, and, uh, the construction has started at the new site, so just east of the existing fire hall. This will be ongoing all summer and into the fall, I'm assuming. So we appreciate your cooperation in avoiding this area for everyone's safety. As of yesterday, July 7th, Public Works advises that we have eight residential bear-resistant garbage bins left at $315 per bin. We did not budget to order more for 2025. So if we want to order, council, if you wanna order anything for 2026, I have, uh, put in an email request to the company that we bought them from to see, uh, what the costs are going forward. I'm sure they're higher than $315 again. Um, also, Eastman Pride Parade and Picnic on the village green and nearby avenues on Sunday, August 10th at 1:00 PM. There will be music, speakers, information booths, and performers, as well as the short 15- to 20-minute walk. I encourage council and residents to support this initiative. I sent council an email about it. Um, and, and if you wish to join the Eastman Pride group that day on the village green, they have had parades and other RMs this summer, Powerbee Prime Falls, Inawam, rural municipality of Whitelands, Black to Body, and their plan is for Victoria Beach. And they were also up at your school, I believe, Steve, in the spring, weren't they? At that little river school, they said they saw you there, Little Black River?
Oh, yeah, 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 sorry, that, that was the day that, um, we had that emergency, so I had to run.
Okay, well, they were at your school as well. Um, uh, Fire Smart Presentation here at the Social Scene on Monday, July 21st at 1:30, drop-in fees do apply. Um, and for, just for council to consider, and Lon, um, maybe it's time to update bylaws 1602 and bylaws 1612, which are the procedural and organizational bylaws, or the legislative.
Yep, get right on that.
Yeah, get right on that. Um, just, just putting the bug out.
Just got there.
All right, anything else, gentlemen? That's all that's on my plate. Go ahead.
I've got a couple of.
With the microphone, please.
Steve, do you mind if I go?
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, Steve.
This arises from correspondence. I just wanna get it out, get it on the table. I need a decision. Um, or we need a decision. Um, one piece of correspondence, promoting a speed table near Sappi's store. It's not a bad idea. I don't know if we're seriously considering it or not, that we don't really know how much it's gonna cost. But I would like to suggest that we at least a speed table. It sounded like a long, it's not so bumpy speed, but.
Oh, those things. We already went down that path.
Looks up speed. Well, we're still on that path, uh, thanks to most recent correspondence. Um, I, I'd like to suggest that we, uh, reach out to RMA of Alexander to find them. Would they be willing to pop up 50% of this? If we have to pay 100%, it's a no-brainer, we can't afford it. But if RMA is willing to pay perhaps, but then it might be worth the council considering. Should we ask?
I think we need to have some facts and figures before we make the ask.
Okay, well, there's lots of facts and figures available for us to, uh, review. Um, are you suggesting that we table this at the next meeting?
Well, we need costs, like, what's it gonna cost? There was no costs, I don't recall, we're not even know.
I, I see you at a range of, uh, 25,000 and change. Yeah, that's what they said.
Speaking personally about Albert Beach, the stop signs have slowed things down nicely. I spoke with the operator of the grocery store, and they're quite happy with what is going on.
Those were moved a little bit.
Yeah, they have, they have moved, they're in a much better location.
Final spots are much better.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Steve, you had your hand up, and then Ian, over.
Um, so just for clarification on the, uh, the school tax issue, I just don't want us to get as confused here, 'cause the votes, like, the gain of vote on the Lord Selkirk School Division Board, that's a nice to have, that's not the problem. The problem is, income is on, or sorry, uh, education tax is on property, that is the number one problem. Um, so I just wanted to ensure that we have sort of our priorities straight going into that meeting. The second thing is just regarding the pride march. Um, I, I would really encourage as many people to come out as possible. Um, when it comes to pride, a lot of people don't understand what it means. It's not just if you're an LGBT plus, it is for everybody. It means that it doesn't matter who you are, it doesn't matter where you're from, you have the right to love whoever the hell you wanna love. And that is ultimately what pride means. It just means pride in your ability to love who you want. And especially with the vitriolic, disgusting hate in the US that is coming up against, um, uh, really all groups who aren't straight and white. Um, and some of those are starting to come a little bit into our country. I just would really like to encourage as many people to come out as possible.
Thank you. Ian? Steve?
Um, I forgot what I was gonna say.
All right, anything else, gentlemen? Grant?
Uh, well, I started out with two items I wanted to bring up. Uh, on this, on the speed tables, I'm, I'm, I like where the new stop signs have gone, and I'm quite willing to wrap this up altogether, if that's the will of council.
I just remembered what I meant.
Okay, that's back to me though. Up ahead.
No, I just remembered what I was gonna say. Um, I was really impressed as well. I was at Sappi's tonight, and, uh, we've got the radar, it's telling you your speed, you've got a stop sign a block away from Sappi's, you have another one on the other side, you've got a stop sign coming this way. I mean, our whole objective at the meeting last year with the RMA of Alexander was say, what happens when people go from the restaurant to the store? That was the issue. And then you get crowds of people walking down the street. I agree with Irwin that this has really changed everything. And to spend $25,000 on raising, you're talking about raising the, the highway up, so you're either up and then over.
Yeah, yeah.
I think the stop signs are being done.
I agree. The whole idea of the speed table, the operable expression is traffic calming. And I think the stop signs where they are now meet that need quite satisfactorily. If I could get onto my bottom point, excuse me. I need a decision, we need a decision, the direction on the steps at one, in front of 145 Victoria Boulevard. I just wanna get that on the agenda. We have to talk some more about what the hell we're gonna do about it. Uh, there's a set of steps halfway down Victoria Boulevard, not too far from the Y Club. The steps have been reported to us as being, uh, hazardous conditions. So we were all poised, uh, to put them on the list to be replaced next year and maybe patch them up so that they're at least safe for this year. But that's, uh, and then we were told, well, we're not sure if these are even municipal stairs, but they are on my map.
They are, they are.
Yeah. Um, so I would like to proceed with what I told the correspondent I was going to do. Patch, patch them up and try and get them their replacement as the next year's budget.
And the patch will work, do you think?
Uh, it'll be subject to final inspection. I've met a contractor who's been, the wood's not rotten, it's just falling apart. Redo all the pastures, put in some light screws, beef it up, and then a final inspection, and then, but to go till next year. Uh, that's fine, I appreciate your clarity on that, and I will proceed. Sorry, I'm sorry, my mic, and I will proceed accordingly.
So I know where this is.
What did you say, Grant?
I can't be disvoted.
Is this the, um, that road that goes, uh, I don't know, it's going east of the, what? And there's houses on the left side, and then there's vacant land on the right side.
That's right, yeah.
So is that vacant land all, uh, council?
No, it's all, it's all script. Yeah. Okay, anyway, uh, the path is clear for me to do what I said it was gonna do. Thank you for that. And I'll, uh, with that, uh, I will retire.
All right, anybody else? Going once? All right. Thank you, gentlemen. All right. Next meeting, oops, pardon me, be it resolved, the July 2025 regular meeting of council now be adjourned. Next meeting will be on Tuesday, July 22nd, 2025, at 7:00 PM here at Victoria Beach at the Social Scene, number 380 row. May I have a mover? Thank you, Ian, second. Steve? All those in favor?
All right.
Very, thank you so much, everybody.